Beside us colleagues, I was just waiting for the bells to stop there, thank you. Well, it's nice to see a full house. Good evening colleagues and welcome to the annual Borough Council. I'm required to inform you that this meeting has been recorded in live streams. And welcome to those members in the public gallery and those watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through the doors behind? And those sitting in the council chamber, please leave the room by the doors behind me. I make your way to the front of the town hall, staff will assist with this. Can you ensure that your mobile phones and other electronic devices are switched off during the meeting? Any member wishing to speak should use the microphones. And for our newly elected members, you have an individual microphone. And use that, please. Can I take this opportunity to remind members of the code of conduct? Let's start the municipal year in the right way. Let's be respectful and courteous towards one another at all times. Very important, this one. Members are reminded that full council today will only deal with the business that is set out on the summons. Now, if you wish to speak as a member, please indicate by raising your hand and being invited to speak. That's the procedure to be followed. All other councillors should remain silent whilst another member is speaking. I haven't received any apologies, our members or officers aware of any apologies from anybody. Thank you. The first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make any declarations before we move on to the next item of business? I must remind you if you have a disclosable pecuniary interest in an item, that will prevent you from participating in the debate and any vote, you will need to leave the chamber during that item. Very important. Declarations of interest? None? Okay. Next item of business is to elect the mayor for the new municipal year. Colleagues, can I now call on? Vote. Oh, thank you. It's nice to hear some sense in here. Can I now call for nominations for mayor, please, for 2024, 2025? Councillor Strike?
I'd like to nominate councillor Fay Cunningham.
Is that seconded?
I'll second that, Mr.
Right, thank you. Before I invite any other nominations, does any member wish to speak in respect of the nomination for councillor Cunningham for mayor? Councillor Strike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move councillor Fay Cunningham. My colleague in the Bolden Caw reward is mayor for the forthcoming municipal year. I've known Fay for many years, both as an officer when she was the mayor's secretary and as an elected member. I know how passionate Fay is about our council, our local history and traditions, and all store South Tyneside voluntary sector, which she plays a very big part. This will be the second time around to hold civic office for Fay and her mayress Stella. So they are tried and tested in the role and have the knowledge to act as worthy ambassadors for South Tyneside. Over the last year, Fay's been chair of Jarro and Bolden Caff. She's proved to be fair, unbiased, professional, but firm with all political parties. And I'm sure she will be the same in this chamber. Fay and Stella are our golden girls. With the assistance of her then deputy mayor and mayress carried out 900 engagements in their previous year of office and raised thousands of pounds for South Tyneside charities. I'm confident that they will have an equally successful year. And it's my pleasure to move councillor Fay Cunningham as mayor for the municipal year 2024 to 2025. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, support councillor Cunningham becoming mayor. She's done the Jarro Caff for the last 12 months, as councillor has just said. And has been very fair, amicable, no ill feeling, et cetera. And I'm sure she'll do the same in that chair. Right, thank you very much.
Any other nominations? Is the motion agreed?
Fay Cunningham, having been elected to the office of mayor of South Tyneside council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Colleagues, can I thank you so much for conferring this honour to my mayress Stella and myself? Being mayor and mayress once was very special. But twice, if you care about the town as much as we do, then it is the stuff that dreams are made of. And Stella and I pledge ourselves to you that we will work hard to promote South Shields, South Tyneside and be the very best of ambassadors. Colleagues, I think we must acknowledge today that the winds of change have most definitely blown through these illustrious corridors. And I think it is important that we all genuinely embrace this change and work together for the residents of our town. We are entering a new and exciting era. But let us not kid ourselves that the road ahead will be easy. Because of the continued relentless budget cuts by central government, we have to find savings of seven million this year and seven million next. We have to build bridges with some of our workforce and restore morale to our staff. And we need to spring clean this borough from top to bottom, so no mean feat. I have long experience of local government and I truly believe that we can only do this by working together, all 54 of us. Colleagues, I don't believe that any of us on both sides of this chamber who put ourselves through the hard work, discomfort of the election process, do so without having a genuine, genuine and burning desire to make South Tyneside a better place. As councillor Strike has mentioned and councillor Robertson, last year's Jarro Bolden Community Area Forum was successful because Labour and independents work together in mutual trust and respect. If we could do this in Jarro Bolden, I am confident we can do this at meetings and community events throughout the whole authority. Colleagues, my friend Ray Spencer, MBE, Freeman of the Borough, is here in the public gallery today. Ray, I am quite unashamedly going to steal one of your punchlines. If you are an officer or a councillor in South Tyneside, if you live or work or your bens go to any of our schools in South Tyneside, then be proud. Be very, very proud. Thank you. Colleagues, the next item of business is to appoint the deputy mayor for the 2024-25 municipal year. Excuse me, colleagues. Colleagues, can I now take this opportunity to thank our outgoing mayor, councillor John McCabe? Thank you so much, John. Or you say, thank you so much, John, for an extremely successful year. And now, can I now call upon councillor Angela Lamont to move a vote of thanks to councillor McCabe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of colleagues, I'd like to thank Mayor McCabe for his service to the borough of South Tyneside. He's had a very busy year, nonetheless, dealing with the challenges and controversy of this chamber. He's carried out his duties with pride and dedication and been an excellent ambassador for the borough. He's carried out over 150 engagements, both borough and region wide and supported other civic dignitaries in their regional events. He's also been abroad to Wuppertal to sign the Friendship Charter and hosted the Wuppertal dignitaries here. John also hosted our Norwegian business delegates here and also guests from Nigeria. During National Heritage Week, the mayor carried out the tours of the town hall, delighting some with tales of the ghostly goings on here and why he has a huge crucifix on the wall in the mayor's parlor. The mayor and mayress recently had the honour of proudly representing the borough at the King's Garden Party and meeting King Charles. John's been an advocate for young people hosting many schools and nurseries into the town hall. He's also taken part in multiple citizenship ceremonies. He's also popular with staff and the civic staff who often say he never takes note of the speeches and always ad-hocks. It's a suburban inside joke. And we've also got to thank all of Lee Mayress, Julie McCabe, for our service to the borough and for always being a stunning companion to all mayors. We don't have the actual total amount of funds raised for charities yet, but we know that's in excess of £10,000 this year, which is a tremendous amount. I would like you to join me, please, in a round of applause for the outgoing mayor, John McCabe.
Can I now call upon councillor McCabe to respond to the vote of thanks?
Well, Madam Mayor, can I just first of all say I wish you the best of luck going forward in your mayoral year. As you know, you've already been mayor for one year. It is a full-time vacation, really. It's an ongoing issue that we must, you know, keep because it's so important for the borough. And that's the main emphasis that all mayors really strive for is to encourage businesses to come into the borough, to ensure that our borough of South Tyneside is known throughout not just England, Wales, Scotland and Northern Ireland, but it's known throughout Europe and through the world. And I think that all mayors do that and are trying to do that in some of my capacity as the mayor. My first engagement was with the Norwegians on the 17th of May because that's our national day. And flew the flag and invited the Norwegians, including Ekwinor, who are a massive business involved with the Dogger Bank Wind Farm project, into the town hall. One of the things I did strive to do was to encourage our children who are the future. So to that end, I brought a lot of schools into the town hall. And we had some various engagements. We had some people come in with their school councils, also visiting schools and encouraging them because at the end of the day, if we can provide in the borough a good standard of education where we have really, really good schools in the borough, if we can then pass that knowledge on to the young people, they have the greater chances of better employment, better pay, but also with things like antisocial behaviour. You know, if you educate a young person not to do silly things like paint on walls and smash bus stops up, you know, it makes a better world for us all and especially in South Tyneside. So that's something that I'm trying to do. Before I forget, because I do forget things, the civic staff. Because at the mayor's charity ball, I forgot to thank them. But, you know, without the civic staff, my job would be a lot harder. It would have been a lot harder. And, you know, I don't know if we're allowed to mention names or anything like that. But Lindsay Oliver, who heads up that service, Claire Daddlish, Helen Dixon, Angie Remington, Carl Williams and Shelley and Lorraine, absolutely fabulous backup. And we're an amazing support. And as I've already said, it's a 24/7 job. There's always something happening. Can you go and attend here? Can you do this? Can you do that? I'd like to thank my wife as well, who is not yet a knight. And the reason she's not yet a knight is she's working in emergencies in Sunham Theatre. She's a theatre sister. And once again, I'm short of staff, so she's been called upon to go into there. And that's the reason why the mayress is not yet a knight. So I'd like to thank my wife and my family. I'd also like to thank everyone in here. Obviously, the new members, I'm not aware of you, but certainly we had a lot of respect shown most of the time by everybody. And also the fact that my colleagues supported the mayor's charities in a really good fashion. It's still open at the moment, I think, to contribute to the mayor's charity, which is the food banks in South Tyneside and also the hospital radio. If anybody's ever, ever had a major injury and had to stay in hospital for a long time, you know, it's a comfort to have that radio. And not everybody can afford the money these days to finance the television. So, you know, if you do feel like giving away the odd £5 million, please feel free to do so. No, I'm not, as somebody said along there, Angela, thank you very much for your comments. I don't ever have prepared speeches. I don't think it's necessary. I think you should speak from the heart. And I believe that South Tyneside will and can go forward in a very, very positive way. And that's what I'm looking forward for in this chamber over the next year, two years. Is that, as the mayor said, we work together in a constructive, positive manner to try and make our residents and our communities have a better existence. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCabe. Colleagues, we will now move on to the appointment of the deputy mayor for 2024-25 municipal year. Colleagues, can I now have nominations, please, for the appointment of the deputy mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to nominate councillor Jason John Potts for deputy mayor.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Is the motion agreed? Thank you, colleagues. Councillor? Yes.
Thank you very much. Yeah, obviously the tittle-tattle goes round about what might happen and what's coming in different positions and committees and what have you. And obviously I go back a long way with Jason Potts, who were brother-in-laws in the past and what have you. And I'm sure he'll follow the role and learn the ropes, et cetera. I did get afraid when I heard the Headworth councillor was going to be deputy mayor, I really did. Because what my concern was, we wouldn't know whether it was John Steve, Eileen Lindthorpe, but it was Jason. Thank God. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can I now ask councillor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say a few words to speak towards the nomination. So Jay has been a councillor since July 2021, representing the residents of the Belgating Headworth Ward. During his time with the ward councillor, he's demonstrated commitment to the borough and the residents. He served on many committees, including being vice-chair of the Jarro and Bolden Community Area Forum for two years. Jay works in the home-to-school transport for children with special educational needs across South Tyneside. He's always shown strong commitment to public service and a passion for our communities. His dedication and commitment have not gone unnoticed. I'm sure he'll represent our borough with dignity and pride, supporting yourself. So I move him as deputy mayor for 2024-25.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Can I now ask councillor Potts to step forward and make his declaration of acceptance of office?
I, Jay Potts, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor of South Tyneside Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability.
Colleagues, it is my great pleasure to announce that my very good friend Stella Matheson will act as my mayoress during my term in office. Mrs Audrey Huntley will act as the deputy mayoress. They will receive their change in the reception room as we continue to conduct council business. On that note, I would now like to invite my guests and those of the deputy mayor to make their way to the reception room, where we will join them after we conclude our council business. May I ask the mayoress to please lead the way for our guests? All right.
Few years, you know, in her role as mayoress, well, deputy mayoress, you know, it was a great pleasure for me last year. I proposed Margaret, my fellow Beadward councillor, to be the new deputy mayor for 2023/24. I've known Margaret for many years, and she has been a most capable councillor for 12 years now. And I have worked alongside Margaret for the last six years as Labour councillors for the Beadward. Margaret has held many important positions in a number of committees, including chairing the Jarro and Bolden CAF meetings. Margaret has been an excellent champion representing her constituents, and during Covid, she was a volunteer helping the elderly and vulnerable constituents within our borough. She has also, along with myself, been chomping our local beads-helping hand's food bank, and she is also a governor for one of our schools in the Beadward. Along with councillor Portous, they both served the borough well too, as well, when both had to take the ceremonial duties of the then deputy mayor, Joe Amor, who was seriously ill and who sadly passed away. They've both done a sterling job, and Margaret Peacock was a credit to the council in the deputy mayor role, along with her mayoress Gladys Hobson. Just thank you for that.
Yes, councillor Robertson.
Thank you very much. On the back of what councillor Dean just said, I think that can be said about a lot of the councillors that's gone. You know what I mean? Councillor Peacock was getting £18,000 a year. She'd done a good job, so did all the councillors that's gone. So thanks to all of them, not just one. Thank you.
Can we now move on, colleagues, to item six, which is the minutes of the council meeting dated the 14th of March. Are they accepted as a true record? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Page 18 of the minutes, it states councillor Robertson asked if data could be provided on council tax arrears, as some residents in other local authorities had been made bankrupt due to council tax debt. Councillor Bell offered to provide this information, and I'm bringing it up, Madam Mayor, because of the response that's in the minutes. So I'm not bringing so many up, it's not. And the response I got, because if anyone looks at the video, I said, can I have a breakdown of who's been made bankrupt by the council for council tax or rent arrears or council tax? And I was told I would get it. Now, if you look at page 36 of the minutes, it states, in response to me, instances of bankruptcy may be few and far between, but don't want to get into this detail. I don't want that answer. I'm an elected member, and I need to know, I want to know how many people have been bankrupted by this council for council tax or rent. Can I get a commitment that I get that? And I don't know who this is. Instances of bankruptcy may be few and far between, but don't want to get into that detail. They're not given the response site at the elected members. I don't know whether it's an officer that stated that or the Labour group. I want the answers, and I want a truthful breakdown of bankruptcies and bailiffs in legal action. Please.
Thank you, councillor Robertson. Are the minutes accepted as a correct record? Well, with that amendment. Is councillor Robertson's amendment accepted? Is that agreed, that the minutes are agreed with the amendment that councillor Robertson has made? Are they agreed? Thank you. The next item of business is mayor's communications. I would first like to welcome to the council our newly-elected councillors. Councillors Brown, Coombs, Curtis, Davies, Fogan, Ginn, Harrison, Myers, Oliver, Owens-Palmer, Tony Roberts and Wood. I very much look forward to working with you all. Can I also take this opportunity to welcome back councillors Dixon, Keegan, Kennedy, McCabe, McHugh and Stonehouse? I would finally like to thank former councillors Bell, Best, Bristol, Donaldson, Foster, Hay, Huntley, Malcolm, Peacock, Hurvis, Anne Wash and Mark Walsh for their contributions to the work of the council during their time as elected members, and to wish them all the very best for the future. I also wish to inform members that our colleague Paul Milburn has made the difficult decision to resign as an elected member for Primrose with immediate effect due to health reasons. A vacancy in the Primrose Ward will be declared in due course, probably tomorrow, Wednesday 15th of May 2024. Paul has been a really well-respected and effective ward councillor since 2019, and I know everyone in this chamber today will join with me and wish him all the very best for the future. Colleagues, our next item of business is the appointment of the leader of the council. Can I ask for nominations for leader? Thank you, councillor Portous.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I propose councillor Tracy Dixon.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Robertson. Are there any other nominations? Is the motion agreed? Thank you. Councillor Dixon has therefore been appointed as leader of the council. Congratulations. May I please now ask the leader to advise members of the appointment she has made in relation to the deputy leader of the council and her cabinet, councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations to your appointment to be the mayor of South Tyneside. I'm sure you will take that role on with professionalism, dignity, as you always have done, Madam Mayor, so congratulations. So, as we all know, and as I've said before, a leader is nothing without the right team, and I'm grateful for the support of mine over the past year. During the past 12 months, the cabinet has worked tirelessly to achieve some fantastic things in our borough, including building children's homes, extra care and community facilities, supporting our most vulnerable and working with our businesses, whilst also overseeing and concluding a number of complicated matters and historic issues. Madam Mayor, there is no denying my cabinet has been impacted by the recent local government elections. We lost some fantastic elected members from across the chamber, Audrey Huntley and Joanne Bell, who have been an integral part of my previous cabinet, and I want to place on record my sincere thanks and gratitude to both of them for all they have done to ensure our residents got nothing but the very best from the services we provide them. As a consequence, I've identified a number of changes to my cabinet team, who I know will support me and help us as a council really deliver for the people, the communities and the businesses here in South Tyneside. Madam Mayor, it is with great pleasure that I can confirm that I've appointed eight colleagues to the following cabinet positions. Councillor Jane Carter will be my deputy leader with the portfolio for governance, finance and corporate services. Councillor Ruth Barkley will continue on my cabinet as lead member for adults, health and independence. Councillor Liz McHugh will join my cabinet in the statutory role of lead member for children's social care and families, which will also include education and skills. Councillor Judith Taylor will also join my cabinet as lead member for culture, leisure and the visitor economy. Councillor Gibson will continue as lead member for neighbourhoods and climate change, and councillor Margaret Melling will continue as lead member for economic growth and transport. And councillor Jim Forman will continue as lead member for housing and community safety, and councillor Paul Dean will continue as lead member for the voluntary sector partnerships and equalities. I have great faith and confidence in the team of councillors to make up my cabinet, who have the experience, knowledge and the passion to lead the council with me and deliver our ambitions for our residents and our communities. Madam Mayor, these changes to the cabinet will need to be reflected in the constitution to ensure accountability and transparency, and there will be a reduction of an SRA to reflect the Members' Allowance Scheme, and I will ask the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs to make the necessary changes. Finally, I just want to update you on my Members' Champions, elected members who act as an advocate for a specific area of the council business, supporting cabinet members in their role. The main responsibility of each cabinet champion is to encourage communication and positive action over the issues they represent. Madam Mayor, they are as follows for 2024/25. Democracy, inequality, inclusion, diversity and LGBTQ+, councillor Shane Smith. Domestic violence, councillor Angela Lamont. Town centres and villages, councillor Joyce Welsh. And youth engagement, skills and sport, councillor Stephen Dean. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Colleagues, I would also ask you to note that the leader of the main opposition group is councillor Dave Kennedy, who is the leader of the South Tyneside Alliance Group, with councillor Kate Owens-Palmer as deputy leader of the South Tyneside Alliance Group. Congratulations, colleagues. Councillor David Francis will continue as the leader of the Green Group, with councillor Andrew Guy continuing as the deputy leader of the Green Group. Congratulations, colleagues. Pardon? Yes, yes, councillor Robertson.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I'm very disappointed, and I know it must happen every year. I've only been here four, five years. But I think it's very unfair that we only get these papers as we walk in the door, yet the opposition have got to put our committee details in 24 hours before or so, or 12 hours before, and we've only got minutes literally to look through this and scratch our head and hear different things. The things that I'm not happy with with the allocation, but it is what it is. During the year, we're seeing councillor Ellison removed from the cabinet with no explanation to the full council or the public, right? Now, tonight, we're seeing that councillor Ellison's been given the chair of a committee. Now, I'm not being nasty towards councillor Ellison, but the people of South Tyneside are getting proud values rammed down their throat, and one of them proud values is transparency. So, a massive thing like the moving a cabinet member, then six months later, giving them a committee, it just leaves us scratching our heads. Yeah. And the final thing, Madam Mayor, obviously, the leader, you know, she's done wonders on what she's been surrounded by for the last two years. And as she's just said, she's lost some good councillors, good people have come in as well. The last job that the leader's got to do is get rid of the rest of the Malcolm clique. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, we haven't gone through the relevant committees as yet, but with regard to the chairperson for the OD, which is HR, personal, sorry, members development, sorry, staffing development, what have you, I think councillor Ellison has actually sat on that committee previously, and I think actually he will do very, very well in that role, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. We'll now move on to item 10, to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs to review and update the constitution. The next item of business, I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, this report sends out the annual review and proposed updates to the constitution for the municipal year 2024/25. I hope you will agree, colleagues, it's been another busy year and a productive year for the Constitution Committee. We know the importance of governance and the effect of governance, and we are all aware of the significant and collaborative effort we've all done to continue to make the advance to the constitution committee, sorry, the council's constitution. The Constitution Committee, a politically balanced committee which represents from across the chamber, working with the council's monitoring officer, embarked upon yet another detailed review with a real focus on improving our scrutiny arrangements. Constitution Committee has met regularly over the course of the past year to share views, consider comments and feedback from members, officers and members of the public, and have worked through opportunities to further develop and improve the constitutional arrangements for the council. I think you will agree, colleagues, that this is evident from the detail within the report for your consideration today. And for ease, all of the key recommendations from the Constitution Committee are set out between paragraphs 19 and 63 of the report. A notable recommendation which the Constitution Committee spent a lot of time considering is set out from paragraphs 26 to 34, our scrutiny framework and scrutiny of decisions. These proposed changes not only tackle the confusion and duplication we know there has been from the engagement work we've done with members and officers, but also provide some significant empowerment and equality across our scrutiny framework, with some real meaningful focuses on the right things, particularly pre-decision. with some real meaningful focuses on the right things, particularly pre-decision scrutiny. Further recommendations to strengthen the articles of the constitution, particularly around community error forums and standards committee, including some specific timeframes in responding to complaints. It is recommended that in part C of the constitution that sets out which parts of the council are responsible for carrying out particular functions is brought up to date. And our code and protocols are updated in part E to provide a greater support and information to elected members. Madam Mayor, the Constitution Committee is the guardian of the council's constitution. And whilst members of the committee may not always agree, we've always taken this responsibility very seriously. It has been through a robust and methodical exercise over the many months that I presented this report to you today. Colleagues, on behalf of the Constitution Committee, I would urge you to agree the changes moved and proposed, and that we ask you to approve the updated constitution as provided in appendixes three, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Forman. Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly welcome many of the changes in this amendment to the constitution, and particularly the stuff around scrutiny, because in my opinion, change is clearly needed in that area. Just in the five years that I've been on the council, I've seen some instances where I feel scrutiny's been done well. But on other occasions, it sometimes feels like those meetings almost just become a briefing where people are given information and there's no real scrutiny taking place. It tells us in the report that the LGA Corporate Peer Challenge gathered feedback from chairs and vice chairs. And I'm just going to pick out a few of those quotes. So, comments included, "On the subject of children and adult safeguarding, the committee has lost its way a little over the last year." And I think all members would find that worrying, given what we've heard about children's services in the last couple of years. With regard to overview and scrutiny, it says, "At present, scrutiny is not a feature of the democratic process, but is rather used selectively. At present, there appears to be a prevalent view that we can pick and choose what's subject to scrutiny, and any issues can be pulled or bypassed the process for whatever reason." And I can attest that I've noticed that in my own personal experience. With regard to the waste strategy, something that I asked to be on the work programme for Place Select Committee a number of years ago, it was added to the work programme. It's still never been heard, two or three years on, never been looked into. And I'm concerned that other items may have been removed from work programmes at the request of lead members, which is quite the opposite of effective scrutiny and simply should not be happening. It goes on to say about overview and scrutiny, "The committee could become more effective if scrutiny was made a formal part of the policy and decision-making process. As it is, the committee is often presented with reports containing policies and decisions that have already been made, making the committee's role redundant. And personally, I would like to see much more of the scrutiny committees making concrete recommendations for change, making those recommendations to change to lead members that then go to cabinet, and for those people to either adopt those recommendations or give very good reasons why they cannot, so that scrutiny actually helps shape good policy for the people of South Tyneside." And lastly, on the subject of scrutiny, I would echo councillor Robertson's comments before. In a council with the makeup that ours now has, where it's nearly half opposition members, I strongly feel that chairing of the main scrutiny committees should be considered to be allocated to opposition members going forward, in line with generally accepted good practice for scrutiny, as opposed to just asking members of the ruling group to take responsibility for marking their colleagues' homework. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Francis. Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to concur with what councillor Francis has just said. I don't believe that the scrutiny committees are fit for purpose whilst the Labour Party are picking out the chairs and vice chairs and basically waving their colleagues through. That isn't scrutiny. That's just giving each other a pat on the back and saying, "Well done, guys", and this is the message it's got us in over the years. And I think that seriously needs to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Does anyone else? Or councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations.
Thank you.
On your role. Just to give my appreciation for all the work done by officers and members. It's a considerable amount of work here, every year, both scheduled and unscheduled work group meetings. Just like to show me my appreciation for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor McCabe?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I must take umbrage with some of the comments that's coming across here about scrutiny. Some of us have been here many, many years and, you know, been on scrutiny committees, and that's what it's all about. The Labour group and the Labour Party do not whip people on scrutiny committees. They have a view and an opinion, and they can do and say what they want to. And I'm speaking as the next chief whip of 13 years, standing. So they could go on, excuse me, John, while I just, you know, allow me three minutes. Is that all right, John? Thank you very much. You know, I'll give you a recent one that I was involved with a few years ago, was the Poverty Commission. We did a scrutiny on poverty. We wanted to examine what was actually going on in the South Tyneside area. And as a result of that, we have, through the scrutiny committee, and you were on that committee councillor Francis, you know, we have done a marvelous job in realising the ambitions of what is happening now, where the poor and the poverty in South Tyneside is being, you know, aligned with organisations, not just voluntary ones, but with the council, and they're helping them. So, you know, everybody's got an opinion, but you've got to stick by the facts, and the facts are, this council runs scrutiny committees to scrutinise, and there's no political interference, and never will be. And if I'm accepted today in my position, which is on your papers, as the chair of the overview scrutiny committee, then, you know, I'd love you to be on it. Because everything will be up a grab. Anything that any member on that committee wants scrutinised will be scrutinised. If anybody is not on that committee and wants to make scrutinised, all they need to do is keep me informed, and that will be scrutinised. I take, you know, umbrage with what was being said. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McCabe. Councillor Robertson?
Mayor. Once councillor McCabe, before I go into my stuff, I'll just say four words about the scrutiny in this council. Ian Malcolm credit card. That's the scrutiny in this council.
Yes.
Councillor Robertson, I must ask you to be respectful, please.
Thank you.
The truth, though, isn't it? Yeah, thank you. So, Madam Mayor, I'm going to go into this stuff about the constitution and the changes. First of all, I mean, obviously it's supposed to be the mayor making night. And on one hand, I don't agree that the constitution changes should be here, because it tends to put a shadow over it.
Yes.
But I won't allow a serious report like this to be shoved in through the back door. So I've got to have me safe, and others have got to have theirs safe. Thank you. So also in the constitution, Madam Mayor, you'll be well aware, we've been maybe before and experienced as a councillor, we're allowed three minutes when we get on my feet. But it is up to the mayor's discretion to allow up to say five minutes. And when it's an important thing like this, yeah, a big report that's changing the constitution, I would ask for a bit of flexibility. Councillor McCabe done it at times, and the other mayors have done it. And with respect, if you would do it and be patient, please. Thank you very much.
Agreed councillor Robertson.
So. So, on page 57 of the papers for tonight, consultation and engagement, it says, "There's a system via the Direct Lab Governance and Corporate Affairs and Monton Officer that provides for feedback by any elected member or member of the public with regards to the council's governance arrangements and council constitution, thereby ensuring anyone who wishes to... has the ability to engage with the annual review." Now, from 2019, since we were voted in, the constitution's gone up, I would say, approximately 150 to 200 pages, i.e. the jump that keeps on getting moved, right? Now, I know the constitution committee does what it does, and I'm going on the constitution committee after tonight. And by God, there will be changes or there will be retractions, yeah? Because it was called the Longgrass Committee, and it still is the Longgrass Committee in my opinion, but I am going on it, and I will be making changes on there. And I know there'll be people saying, "No, you won't". Yes, I will. But anyway, tonight, we've got to agree on this, as everybody knows, but the new councillors might not understand that, we're being here brand new tonight. And I've got last year's papers here in my hand. And we didn't, the opposition didn't agree to the changes to the constitution last year. I don't think any of the Greens did, or the independents. Now, tonight, we've got three options. And that, asking to agree it, yeah? Asking if they disagree or review. Now, we need to review this. It cannot go through tonight. And Labour's got two more numbers than us, and you might win the night, right? But we will see what day with it, because you cannot just keep on railroading like you could when it was only five or six of us sitting here. There's going to be changes in this constitution, keep on moving and amending. To favour one side is not fair, right? Now, the same as what was mentioned there about the committees, what councillor Francis and councillor Kennedy said. At page 28 of tonight's papers, oh, there's a bad cough, right? So, on the motion for the SIPF motion that I've done, it states at point number two, "For whichever ruling group is in position in May 2024 to consider appointing chairs either in an opposition-led or politically balanced method across all scrutiny chairing and vice-chairing positions." It looks like that's been totally ignored unless somebody can demonstrate, based on the papers tonight, how that's been complied with. We've been given a little nibble over this side. And don't forget, we've only got two more councillors than us, a nibble. And that's what it said, and it was agreed unanimously at full council, right? So that needs looked into. This constitution amendments cannot be agreed tonight. Then we go to the papers I've got in my hand, is the 17th of May 2022. And these are the, this is the report of the independent remuneration panel for councillors, allowances and payments of SRA. Now, this is the document, Independent Remuneration Panel Report. And what it states is, "From the survey results, it is clear that some councillors believe that some council committees are undervalued in terms of responsibility and have queried why certain committee chairs receive less than others. For example, why the chair of the audit committee receives less than the chairs of scrutiny committees." Now, I know Labour's saying, "Oh, well, we've made the changes, the vice chair, the caf is not getting it, SRA anymore, and we've done this and we've done that." But if you look at importance in these committees, and I'm just going off what's in my head, when you look at the breakdown of payments, we've got seven scrutiny committees, each chairman's getting eight grand each, right? We've got the caf's, and they're getting six and a half thousand each. The chair, I won't bother who the chair is, one of them may go, "Ah, well..." The chair of the audit committee is an independent. It's not about that. It's about respecting the positions that they're in. And the most, one of the most important committees in this council, for obvious reasons, is the audit committee. The chair of the audit committee is on £5,000. £3,000 less than the seven scrutiny committee chairs, and £1,000 less than a caf chair. It's back to front, you know, it's just not getting the importance that it should do.
Can you wind up councillor Robertson?
I thought that was three minutes, I've got another two.
Right.
Thank you. So, at page 503 of the papers, or page 443 of the constitution, co-opted allowances. And this is in red here, I'm not just going off old ground, this is red, this is the changes. For each year, an allowance of £5,525 will be paid to the independent chair of the standards committee, right? The co-opted member. When you look at the council's constitution and allowances scheme, it says that co-opted members will get £885. Why are we paying the chair of the standards committee seven, eight times that, £5,000 instead of £885? It needs looked at, yeah? Then we go to our scrutiny committees, what councillor Francis has just said, yeah? We've got independent people in here to look at our committees. At the last full council meeting, or the one before, I stood here and I said, "What's overview and scrutiny committee is not scrutinising." And the member got up and said, "We are scrutinising this, that and the other." Well, these independent people say that you're not scrutinising. It says of the independent people, Mayor, "I find the lack of challenge very worrying sometimes, yeah? There's no formal feedback mechanisms other than reports to cabinet. We should provide an annual report with a whole programme for councillors and senior officers, yeah?" So at the overview and scrutiny, councillor McCabe was doing it two years ago, and it was a scrutiny committee for the last year. The chair's been getting paid £10,000, and you won't find the word scrutinising any of the minutes. It's a joke. And I know now we've changed the seven committees, right? Our panels, we've now changed them, and every one of them has now got the word scrutiny. The seven of them, Mayor, right? This time next year, we can look back at the papers for the full year, and let's see out of the seven of them, who mentions scrutiny? Because they don't like scrutiny. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Robertson. Colleagues, for ease, the motion asks... Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment. I'm sure you'll serve the borough well, as you've done in the past. I just want to respond to some of the comments that come from councillor McCabe this evening, and echo those from other members across the room. Clearly, the experience of a scrutiny function is far rosier if you're a member of the leading group. And not to prejudice any ongoing complaint that might be currently lodged, I've personally seen the interference from members of the cabinet with the scrutiny functions of this borough. I would ask, Tracy, councillor Dixon, sorry, as leader of this council, I would ask that you remind members of your cabinet that, I almost didn't bring this as a prop, that this document is the rulebook we have all agreed to follow. It sets out how we should conduct ourselves in this chamber, and it is not to be bypassed or excused for any reason.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to reiterate councillor Robertson's sentiments, and also councillor Thompson, in congratulating you in becoming mayor for the second time, and briefly say, I'm indebted for the help you gave my mother in her mayor all year 97. And may I also say to councillor McCabe, formerly mayor of the borough, it isn't lost on me that councillor McCabe has significant past connections to the minds of the town, and it's enmeshed within this council. Thank you for that, and also for the training we've received so far this week to be mindful of the code of conduct and the standards in public life. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really, just for clarity, this constitution committee is made up with members of the opposition, be it the independent now StAG group and former members of the Green Party. And I have to say, the work that we did in getting to where we are now, we worked tirelessly. And we worked collectively in putting together these proposals for these scrutiny committees. And I just want to remind members that scrutiny has membership of six opposition members as well as six Labour members, and there is opportunities to scrutinise what goes on within those committee meetings. And just for clarity, Madam Mayor, with regard to the remunerations, there is actually only six chairs, because one of the chairs of one of the scrutiny committees will actually become the chair of the overview and scrutiny committee as a whole. But Madam Mayor, there has an awful lot of work gone into this, and I would like to thank officers as well in actually coming together. There has been a reduction in the SRA allowances. We've tried to bring it in line with one another, looking at the amount of times the meetings actually are held. And also, Madam Mayor, it is a number, and I mean a number of years, I can't remember if ever caf chairs were paid, sorry, caf chairs do get paid, but vice chairs do not get a remuneration, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Colleagues, for ease, the motion asks the council to agree a number of recommendations, which I will read in turn. Does council agree the changes proposed to the constitution and associated arrangements are set out in the report and reflected in appendix three? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Does council approve and formally adopt the council's constitution as amended? Pardon?
Yeah, I can finish asking what you're asking first, and then... You would like a name for it, but you haven't finished reading out what you're asking.
All right, I'll finish. All right, I'll finish reading out the other two parts, councillor Robertson. Does council approve and formally adopt the council's constitution as amended, including articles, functions, rules of procedure, codes and protocols on the member allowance scheme attached at appendix three for the municipal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five? Is that agreed? Thank you. Does council authorise the director of governance and corporate affairs monitoring officer to finalise and progress the arrangements as approved? By, let me finish, please, councillor Robertson. By full council and make any further consequential changes or minor alterations arising from the decision of full council today? Is that agreed? Thank you. You would.
There's been no dissenting voice, so I don't know why.
There's been no dissenting voices, councillor Robertson, so the motion is agreed.
Didn't see, didn't agree, which is why.
Yeah, yes, you didn't see, you didn't agree.
But I don't know which part is.
Sorry, sorry, councillor Robertson. Yeah. So, thank you, colleagues. We'll now move on. The next item of business is to consider the membership of the committees of the council for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, as indicated in the printed list circulated to members on gold paper, which meets political balance requirements as detailed in the supporting report provided. I will ask councillor McKeown to move the appointments. Councillor McKeown.
Thank you, madam mayor, and congratulations to yourself, the leader, and, and the new director. Item is item eleven, and I move the membership of committees for twenty twenty-four stroke twenty twenty-five, as indicated in the gold papers that have been tabled and circulated to members this afternoon to meet the political balance requirements as set out in the supporting report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you. Councillor Keegan, thank you. Are there any alternative nominations? Councillor, no? Councillor Robertson?
He just wants to speak on it, he said he didn't want to make any other nomination.
Yes, you can speak, councillor Robertson.
Thank you very much. Councillor McKeown's just put it across whatever it's termed as, when it's put across. Councillor McKeown, can you have a look at page twenty-eight of the papers tonight? And have you got the same as me, is it the motion? At the bottom, it says, obviously, South Tyneside Council resolves. Is it the same? I don't know.
Is it about the same business?
I'll, I'll read it out anyway.
Councillor Robertson? Which, which party is speaking?
See, on, on the papers, we've been given the hard copies, there's none of the different items of the agenda. These are the ones that's published on the, on the website or sent to the councillors that I've printed off.
We, we can only deal with what's written today.
So, councillor McKeown, what you've just mentioned there, I said it five minutes ago when I was talking about something else. And on the motion, which was agreed unanimously by everyone in the chamber, it was agreed for whichever ruling group is in position in May twenty twenty-four to consider appointing chairs either in an opposition-led or politically balanced method across all scrutiny chairing and vice-chairing positions. It doesn't look as though that's been even taken into account on the chairs and vice-chairs that you've got, the way it's worded then, it was unanimously agreed. If you could give an explanation, please.
Thanks, madam mayor. Actually, it is politically right, and it has been checked over quite a few times, and the positions are of the political percentage on the correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd just like to echo the thoughts from earlier, that these chairs are not politically balanced, particularly overview and scrutiny. It is from the lead group. I was shocked and appalled to receive this paper when I arrived in this place. There was a, a big heartfelt motion from across the borough to reject this level of control across this place. And to take overview and scrutiny and to hold it inside the lead group is not what the people of this place voted for for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now put the motion to you. Are those appointments as set out on the gold papers agreed? Name vote? Name vote? Yes, name vote agreed.
But I haven't put a long term of remuneration through yet, so. We're, we're doing a lot of name vote on, on the.
So, are you, are you, is your amendment that we reject? Is that the amendment we're voting on?
It's just the gold papers at the moment, which is just the membership, it's not the chairs or the vice chairs, yeah?
Right.
Just the membership.
Just the membership, thank you. So it's a name vote on the membership? Yeah.
Okay. If you need five members to support.
Oh, yes, councillor Robertson, have you got five members to support you, please?
Madam mayor, we know that, we know that the committee allocations are politically balanced, it goes without saying.
Yes.
All the work that's gone into it between the Monten Officer, the leaders of each group, we know that, we're not questioning that. The point was about the chairs and vice-chairs. It's just ninety percent Labour, it's not doing what they said they would do.
Yeah. Right. But councillor McCabe?
I think we should be accurate. Councillor Robertson's quoting ninety percent of the, of the chairs. You know, I'm looking at councillor Brennan, Vice Chair of our place. I'm looking at councillor Francis, Vice Chair of Children's Safeguard and Young People. I'm looking at Audit Committee Chair, councillor Guy, Vice Chair, councillor Thompson. It's not ninety percent. You know, and at the end of the day, what the leadership, what the leadership of the, of the, of the council has to do is to take into account the commoncy of people putting into these positions. You know, I don't know, this gentleman from, from Adam, I'm sorry, I don't know you from Adam, I don't know what your background is, I don't know it's, you know, what your kind of university background is, but to put people straight into positions that have just come into the council, you know, I don't agree with it. And that's where common sense comes in. Common sense dictates that people with the experience and who've been here for quite a number of years know that what the procedure is, should be entitled to put in for the job, the same as you are entitled to put in for the job as well. But at the end of the day, it doesn't happen in the House of Commons, it doesn't happen in the House of Lords, it doesn't happen in any democratic society in Europe. If the party that win the election, win the election, then they can appoint in certain places who they wish. That's my opinion.
Thank you, thank you, councillor McCabe. Can we, can we?
Councillor Roberts has got his hand up, but it's just about. Because we want to do that as part of item twelve, which is about chairs and vice.
Can I just please come back to what you said?
Before we move on, because what we're discussing now is item, item twelve, and we haven't agreed on item eleven.
I'm just wanting to come back to what councillor Mc, point of information.
Can we, just a moment, councillor Roberts, can we agree on item eleven? And, and that is the appointments as set out in the gold paper. Is that agreed, colleagues?
Agreed.
That agreed. Now we'll move on.
What can I answer?
To item twelve, which is the next business. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, madam mayor, it was just what councillor McCabe's just said there. And I've got to agree what you said, Mr. Councillor McCabe, about, well, let us finish, I didn't interrupt you. What I'm going to say to you is, I'll agree what you said about new councillors coming in and getting on these, they need a bit of experience. But what I can see is, up to five years ago, there was fifty-four councillors in here, all Labour, and the experience that they've brought forward now, what eight hundred million pound in debt is an absolute disgrace. Thank you.
Right. So the next, item twelve, the next business is the appointment of chairs and vice-chairs of the committees as listed in the green papers, and I will ask councillor McKeown to move the appointments. Councillor McKeown.
Thank you, madam mayor. As stated, item twelve, the appointment chairman and vice-chairman of the committees of the council. I move that the chairs and the vice-chairs of the committees for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, as indicated in the green papers, tabled and circulated to members this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Councillor Keegan, thank you. Are there any alternative nominations? Thank you. We will, sorry. Are those appointments as set out on the green papers agreed? Are they agreed? Thank you. They've been, they've been agreed.
They haven't, we'll probably need to do a show of hands, because there was a dissenting voice.
Right. Because there is a dissenting voice, I will, I will now have a show of hands.
So we need five members to be.
Can we have five members, councillor Roberts? Councillor, sorry.
Thank you, madam mayor, and I'd appreciate other members will also want to speak on this before we move to a vote. I just want to clarify something that a member's just said, I assume it was a slip of the mouth, but I really want to correct it before it's put in any kind of record. Being a university graduate should never be a prerequisite for a chair of this council under any circumstances. Some of the most confident people I know have not been anywhere near a university. And I want to make it very clear that to anyone in this borough that wants to put themselves forward for election and to scrutinise the functions of this borough, they don't need a bit of paper from a university to do it. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts wants to speak again.
Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, madam mayor. Councillor McKeown, same again, I've, I've said it three, four times, I'm going to repeat it again, because we're now on about chairs and vice-chairs, thank God. Right? Through the words from the motion, that were all unanimously agreed, for whichever ruling group is in position, May twenty-four, to consider appointing chairs either in an opposition-led or, I can't, can, can I have a bit quiet while I'm talking? An opposition-led or politically balanced method across all scrutiny chairing and vice-chairing positions. Now, that's self-explanatory, right? There's the papers, right? Want to put the mic on? There's the papers, Vice Chair, right, Vice Chair and Chair, of the seven scrutiny committees. Right, now, this is reality, it's unbelievable. Seven scrutiny committees in this council. There's seven Labour chairs, right? And there's one, one independent vice chair. So out of fourteen, seven chairs, seven vice-chairs, we've got one opposition. How the hell can that be fair? It's an absolute disgrace, it really is. It's the police policing themselves, that's why it's in a mess.
Thank you, councillor Robertson. You've now called for a.
Councillor Keown.
Point of information, just to correct councillor Robertson again, we have councillor Brennan as a Vice Chair and councillor Francis. That's two. That's two. Councillor Francis. Well, you know I like accuracy, you know? Yes, that's very, that's very good, thanks, John.
Thank you. Yes, we will now conduct a name vote, and that is with regard to the appointments as set out on the green papers.
Thank you, madam mayor. Elected members, I'll read each of your names alphabetically, and would ask that you please indicate clearly, using the microphones as to whether you are for, against or abstaining from the vote as to the chairs and vice-chairs on the green paper. Councillor Barclay?
For.
Councillor Brennan?
Against.
Councillor Brown?
For.
Councillor Carter?
For.
Councillor Clare? Councillor Coombs?
Against.
Councillor Curtis?
Against.
Councillor Davies?
Against.
Councillor Dawes?
For.
Councillor Payden?
For.
Councillor Estine?
For.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Ellison? Councillor Foggan? Councillor Ford?
Against.
Councillor Foreman? Councillor Francis? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Guy? Councillor Jinn?
Against.
Councillor Harrison?
Against.
Councillor Herbert? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy? Councillor Kilgaw? Councillor Lamont?
For.
Councillor Leisk? Councillor, sorry, councillor Keir Maxwell?
For.
Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McCabe?
For.
Councillor McKeown? Councillor McKeown? Councillor Mellon? Councillor Milne? Councillor Myers? Councillor Oliver?
Against.
Councillor Owens Palmer?
Against.
Councillor Portouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Keir Roberts? Councillor T Roberts? Councillor Robertson? Councillor Smith? Councillor Stonehouse?
Against.
Councillor Stray? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson?
Against.
Councillor Trina? Councillor Welsh? Councillor Wood?
Against.
Councillor Yeh?
Colleagues, the motion has carried twenty-eight votes for, twenty-four votes against. Thank you, colleagues. We'll now move on to item thirteen, which two is to appoint representatives to serve on outside bodies. As set out in the yellow papers, I will ask councillor McKeown to move the motion. Councillor McKeown.
Thank you, madam mayor. I move that the appointment of representatives, as indicated on the yellow papers, tabled and circulated to the members this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that seconded?
Oh, seconded, madam mayor.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Dean. Are there any alternative nominations? Yes, councillor Robertson? In place of, of who? I think councillor Bell is, 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 she's, she's on, on the lists. Yes, she's not there as a councillor, but you can, you can ask to remove her and replace her with. Councillor Robertson, it's not, it's, as you know, it isn't as easy as that. And we will, if that is your amendment, we will have to put that amendment to the council. So you wish to amend that item by replacing myself, councillor Oliver, with myself? That's, yes, yeah, right.
So you might, you'll want to do a vote on that particular amendment before we move forward.
Yes, so we will now do a vote on that amendment, councillor Robertson, and then we'll move on to the, to main. A, a name vote?
You might just want to ask if it's a great. You might just want to ask if it's agreed first because it's only if there's a dissenting voice that a vote might be needed.
Right, now, it's, I'm being advised that I can ask the council if that is agreed because there's only a dissenting voice. Do you wish to?
There may not be a new for a new vote if your proposal is agreed and there is a dissenting voice, that's the point I'm trying to.
Yeah.
So it's just whether or not it's agreed, the amendment.
Yeah. Counselor, Counselor Strake?
I would have to disagree with that proposal, Counselor Robertson. Counselor Oliver has been on the, um, Bolton Community Centre before and no longer on. Um, I'll suggest that we keep the people who are already on that committee who are dedicated. Can, uh, Joan Bell is still vice chair of that community centre and does a really good job. Uh, Jane Taylor is part of the community, Bolton Community, been on there for a lot of, a lot of years and totally contributes quite a lot to the community centre. So all I've got to say on that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Oliver?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have not been on the committee of the Bolton Community Centre before, I've been a volunteer of the community centre, just to correct Alison on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
A name vote being requested, if we've got five members, then it would be a name vote on the proposal because there's been a dissent.
So do you, there's a name vote being proposed, do you have five members who wish to? Right. So the amendment, we are voting on the amendment, and the amendment is that Counselor Oliver replaces myself on Bolton CA Committee. Can, can I just say that I'm in the middle at the moment of organising the Bolton Festival, I am the chairman? Counsel Oliver?
Yes, I do, I was just going to say that, yeah, you're in the middle of doing that festival. As you know, I've been on the events team before and dealt with a lot of events. So I think I'd fit in and continue your good work that you've, if you're willing to do that.
Right. So we're going to put the amendment to the vote, and it's a named vote, colleagues.
So, members, I'll read out all your names again alphabetically and you'll just need to do the same process. For, against, or you're abstaining from the proposal put forward by Counselor Robertson. Counselor Barclay?
Against.
Counselor Brennan?
Agreed.
Counselor Brown?
For.
Counselor Carter?
Against.
Counselor Clare? Counselor Coombs?
Agreed.
Counselor Curtis?
Abstain.
Counselor Davies? Counselor Dawes? Counselor Payden?
Against.
Counselor Estine?
Against.
Counselor Dixon?
Against.
Counselor Ellison? Counselor Foggan? Counselor Ford?
Abstain.
Counselor Foreman? Counselor Francis? Counselor Gibson? Counselor Guy?
For.
Counselor Gin? Counselor Harrison? Counselor Herbert? Counselor Keegan? Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Kilgawa? Counselor Lamont?
Against.
Counselor Lisk? Counselor K Maxwell?
Against.
Counselor N Maxwell? Counselor McKeown?
Against.
Counselor McKeown?
Against.
E, sorry, I said McKeown and I meant McKeown, and you said it in the right order. Counselor McKeown? Counselor McKeown? Counselor Mellon? Counselor Milne?
For.
Counselor Myers?
For.
Counselor Oliver?
For.
Probably should declare an interest, but, okay. Um, Counselor Owens Palmer?
For.
Counselor Porthouse?
Yes.
Counselor Potts?
Against.
Counselor Proudlock? Counselor K Roberts? Counselor T Roberts? Counselor Robertson? Counselor Robertson? Counselor Smith? Counselor Stonehouse? Counselor Strake?
Against.
Counselor Taylor? Counselor Thompson?
For.
Counselor Trina? Counselor Welsh? Counselor Wood?
For.
Counselor Yeh?
So the proposal hasn't been passed on the basis that there's 26 votes against, 21 for and five abstentions.
Right. Excuse me. Um, the, the amendment is not carried um, on the grounds that there were 21 against. Twenty, sorry, 21 for, 26 against and five abstentions. So the substantive motion is carried. No, we'll, we'll have to move on. Yes. So can we now agree the list as printed? Thank you. Right, can we now move on to item 14? And that is to approve a programme of ordinary meetings of the council and committees 2024-25. I will ask Counselor McKeown to move the programme. Counselor McKeown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the meetings of the council and committees, as indicated, on the programme of ordinary meetings circulated to members this afternoon on the blue papers be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that seconded?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Dean. Is that seconded? Yes, Counselor Dean. Does any member wish to speak on the matter or propose an amendment? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, that concludes the business of annual council today. Can I thank everyone for their attendance this evening? Thank you so much.